Okay, first item on the agenda tonight is the discussion of the presentation for the attendance rate development. So, we've all had time to review this. What comments, suggestions, modifications you have?
My thought processes of just kind of going through is the first several slides are sort of this generic kind of global information of why this is good and in my head I'm thinking how does that specific us that flows right into that, right? It flows right into the specifics of our district, at least where we're at. I think it's making that connection of where we're at and where we want to be, right? The beginning is this generic, so this stuff looks great, but you want to be there. And I think that's why we're trying to have this flow of both presentation. Specifically, our district wants to be at this place. I guess maybe that's the whole reason that we're doing this, right? Is to get that information out there as to why we're doing it and what we're really trying to do. I like the flow of it and trying to see if it's really getting at that point of where we want to be. And if it does, sort of an existential one.
So I think that the, initially, that the plan is that this presentation was to be used in community meetings in April. That didn't happen, obviously. So perhaps we should think of how we want to use this presentation at this point. Which we'll talk about in a moment, but leads into a discussion of forums that we want to do prior to the big community forums in September, where we'll have maps and things. How would you like to use this and does that change anything? The fact that we didn't do it in April, does that change anything about the presentation itself?
I guess I'm more along the lines of, I think when we go out to community members, that they want to see maps or have input on that. I don't know if they want to be educated again, I feel like.
By the time we get to the maps, that's where they're going to be putting their attention. Which is, I think, why we wanted to start with this. So, the purpose of this would be to, and I think, you know, at this point would be, do we want to do some forums? Smaller, perhaps, focused on certain populations in which we would present this presentation? Because I'm not sure that this entire presentation would be what we're looking for when we have the maps.
It is awful long to be part of also doing maps, right? I think we talked about kind of getting the ideas out there as to what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it concurrently with the actual boundary drawing, right? Because they're both pieces kind of going hand, but they're hard to do simultaneously in a meeting, right? I guess I would ask the question, are people not aware of where we're at and where we're trying to get? Because if they're not aware of that, then this becomes a very important piece. If we feel that people are aware of that, then maybe it's hitting them over the head with a hammer. But I feel like there's not, not everybody is completely on board with the idea and what it's all about. Because people hear the word boundaries and make a school that you're going to make a go to and put a blind on to not let the rest of it. So you can't, can't have one without the other. But I don't want to be overkill. As just constantly reeducating people can be too much, but I don't think it can be ignore that whole piece either. So it's got to be something between, and maybe that's what you're trying to get at, is what's the between? Size the presentation as well as when are we going to do it? That's a tough one, I think. We can pare down the presentation, but when we're going to get, if it's going to be prior to September, that's not a lot of time when we do it.
Yeah, I think the most important thing is that the work has been done and this frames the work. And so we have the frame that we're, where we're coming from. How, you know, yeah, I think once you start doing forums with maps, I don't, I think you're going to lose people if you start kind of going into this. But, but then this is the rationale behind that. And so I think that will help inform those conversations. So when you're talking to small groups, this is what we have to fall back on. This is what we have as a board to frame this to the public. You know, I think if we identify some groups or some areas, you know, if we, you know, I mean, we have Sarah Barron here with affordable housing folks. I mean, I could see this talking to the Chamber of Commerce with a presentation like this. Groups like that, you know, that might be able to weigh, you know, have an understanding, like, here's our framework. This is why we are doing this. This is why this is really important to do, that it's not just limb. And so, and then I think you can, you know, depending on your audience and their awareness, you can kind of pick and choose. I mean, to me, you know, kind of obviously knowing all of the background and the benefits, if I just jump right to the graphs, it's great, right? Then I have those graphs, they're really nice, it's easy to see. It's easier to visualize how far away we are from the goal and then it's easy to see where that goal is. So again, to me, I can envision, you know, if we go out and have, you know, have some opportunities at neighborhood centers, chambers of commerce, you know, try to target different areas of town. Maybe try to get geographically, you know, be able to run Liberty, you know, to cover, cover our bases that way. I don't think we can do a lot of them. And frankly, you know, I'm more interested in myself as well, getting into work on maps and making real concrete decisions with them. Because that part, and a lot of people aren't going to start paying attention until, you know...
I think you kind of struck accordingly there, but maybe as a presentation, it's, and I think Lori had said it early on, that we need to find some allies and partnerships with various groups. And that maybe that's where you kind of do that targeted presentation to get some of those allies, you know, kind of on board with the process. So then when you are going out to various community groups, right? You know, parents and families and things, that it's not us against the world, right? Some of the folks there are kind of seeing the whole picture and we don't have to start from scratch, like every time we go to talk to them.
You know, I don't know if this would take up too much time in one of the actual joint council of governments meetings, but I could see this kind of information. I mean, I think this is too long a presentation for the format, but to have it, to send it to people and to give a short presentation, just kind of overview. So that we can, because that, you know, who are going to be our big allies? You know, it's going to be county and city government. It's going to be, you know, we want people like Chamber of Commerce on board. We want groups like the Housing Coalition and we want, you know, other, the stakeholders. So not just our maybe traditional stakeholders, which we would assume are government and Chamber of Commerce, but are also stakeholders who are representing kind of our underrepresented populations. Because there's a lot of that in our community. There's a lot of folks who really want to see this work happen. And this is a catalyst to bring a lot of that together. Because we are actually one governmental body that can really affect this in a way just by doing it, you know? No city government can tell a developer what to build and where. They can't, you know, it's a lot trickier. You can make zoning laws and then builders can say, okay, and I'm not building, you know? But this is something I think that helps, in my opinion, is going to help drive some of that for the future. And we want those folks on board.
Yeah, joint, that's a, that's a great, great idea to do as a joint meetings discussion. And we've done many presentations there on the bond and things. So as far as the time required for abbreviated version of this, yeah, I think that would fit right in. And I think that that's a, that's a very good way of doing it, because then you reach everybody quickly, have everybody there. This information can be sent to everybody before the meeting, so they have a chance to go through it and everything happening. So I think that'd be a very good discussion.
Yeah, we started the topic at the last point, and I mean, we hosted two years, right? And there was, it was very high level.
Right.
I think that actually prompted some of the feedback we got originally from Sarah, who was then a great addition to the conversation after that. So just from that initial talk, it started the conversation going to, this is a nice format, right? I can read thirty slides, you know, everybody sees this is probably a little too much for that format, but...
Well, but I mean, even if, even if you send the thirty slide one to them, they have a chance to go through it and then we get our greatest hits of...
Five.
Five or so and drive it that way, then yeah, you have the basis for your discussion.
Could just, when we do the presentations here, what's the limit offering? Slides of eight?
Six.
Six.
Try to get them to six. And one of those is questions, right?
It just says questions?
It does.
So thinking about, I think it's helpful to think about where we're going to use it in terms, and so that tells us what it should contain. And what I hear everybody saying is that it's got what we need, we'll just pick from that, depending on where we're going. One piece that I'll add is that Kingsley had asked us to remove all deficit language. And I was just going to ask if that's something that he could take care of for us or provide us feedback on. Is there, are there any other tweaks to anything that...
Let me just have that, go through that.
Go through the...
The deficit. Again.
Is the upcoming committee meeting a good summary?
I don't think so.
Yes, well, they are not. That's another place I think would be good to run this through and get some feedback on. See if they have anything they'd like to see changed, added, modified. So then the next piece, I think, of this discussion is, is where and when are we going to have these group meetings? And obviously, given our time, we're going to have to divide. We can't have, the board is meeting at X location and then we'll only have two or three meetings. You know, if we want to hit places, then I think, my opinion would be that we should break into small groups and, or, you know, somebody has a connection with a particular group, they could go and present there. I mean, I think that this is useful to building allies prior to the maps. I agree with Paul, once the maps come out...
Your participation may be very long until you have maps.
Well, and that's why I think we do the targeted groups. We don't so much say, we're having a forum at this place on this time, but we say, we're going to the chamber, where they're already meeting anyway, and we're just going to be on their agenda. We're going to the supervisor's meeting or something, or I don't know what. We're going, we identify those places where they're already meeting and we just get ourselves on their agenda. And then I also think it would be good to do some neighborhood centers. Because I do feel like one of the things that has been really missing from past efforts to work on attendance zones is that very rarely do the folks that are sometimes most affected have an opportunity to weigh in on what they think. Just an example of this is I spoke with the folks at the Senate for Worker Justice and initially they said they didn't like any of this, they thought this is a bad idea. They don't want busing. And when I explained a little bit more about it, then they said, oh yeah, that's what we want. So I felt like it was important to have that discussion so that they didn't come at us right away saying, no, 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 that's more busing. We don't like busing, you're already doing that, we don't want that. So it was helpful. And then, then they were like, yeah, yeah, this is definitely, we're, how can we help? So that's where I think we get the message out, we build the allies, hopefully get some support.
I don't know that, anyways, they're looking to really up the ante on busing, right? But I think that's where the maps are important, is figure out, you know, how much of this can be by busing. And then at some point, busing has to happen, but the attempt isn't just to randomly draw little circles and see what the buses have to factor into it, it's part of the conversation. It does have to inform the process, right? The goal is the, really the important part, the means to get there, is part of it is changing attendance zones. It's not the only part of it, right? That's not the only thing that we talked about or are going to talk about. Part of that very big lofty goal that we have is attendance zones. There's going to be pain points and putting that out there. Two of those support groups say, look, you're going to hear from the people in your sphere, whether it's your community from the neighborhood center or business folks at the chamber or whatever it is. This is what we're happening and this is why it's happening, so that you're prepared for it. It can form a discussion as well.
So should we identify some of those groups and I'll pick a few? We'll just assign Jan and Emberthina since they're not here.
I heard they were going to do them all.
I would say we have time to think about it, but I really think we don't. It's time we get on people's agendas.
Well, joint entity when we have the meeting with those...
So check when that is.
Check when that is and see if they're...
Do we have a certain representative that's going assigned to those?
No, it's just...
I usually go, I have.
So who would like to contact them?
It's in Northrop A P this time, yeah?
Oh, Sean, would you like to contact them since they're hosting?
Sure. I have it on my calendar. I don't think it's that far away, actually.
Chamber? Anybody who's in, there's Corville Chamber, there's the, I said Chamber. I think they have separate meetings.
Do they?
July sixteenth is the...
I think they have separate meetings.
What date?
July sixteenth.
I'd be happy to give them their order.
Joint entities? Okay.
They have their little copy at four and then you start to call them.
It said flat, how you said that?
Monday, July sixteenth. They haven't set a spot and they said it's likely to be at the Rex Center in the conference room. They generally send something out prior to meetings, saying if they have anything they want to add to the agenda from all various groups, so...
Do you feel like just sending something to them and saying, hey, we would like to, you know, give a short presentation?
Okay, so joint entity, Sean's going to take care of getting that on their agenda.
And you said you spoke to C W J?
I did.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. They had some ideas about groups that we could meet with and how to meet with them, how to organize them. They suggested, like the Forest Edge group meeting at Parkview, they said they could set up a meeting for us. So I could reach out to them and have them do that.
That'd be great and then see what the different groups are and then we can get that up there and see who can go.
They also, I actually, I think, so Peasant Ridge Neighborhood Center, they said would be another one to do.
Broadway.
So...
Rain Center.
Yeah, I'll find my list here. Go on and talk about some others while I look at the list that they gave me.
DPO.
Maybe during the summer.
Until September.
But, you know, right away in September.
Well, yeah, right, yeah.
You know, they're always looking for topics for meetings. It would take a whole topic.
I think that...
More briefly, yes.
Well, I think that'd be a real lot.
DPO? Yeah, the DPO president, his administrator, so we could ask. I'll talk to him.
See.
Excellent, okay. So DPO, we got Eric Johnson on that. Thank you, Eric. Let's see. What other groups?
I mean, I think, you know, I think the chamber's pretty, Association of Realtors. I mean, that's, trying to think of, you know, when way back in oh nine and ten, I think in the different groups that were represented, it was the governments, it was the Realtors, it was, I'm sure, the chamber, folks were involved. So, and I don't know, I mean, frankly, it's not my crowd, so I don't know if there's overlap between Realtors and chamber, if that would fit. If there's certain people we should talk to, you know, that's out of my knowledge base. I have a... I have a Realtor.
I have a couple named, one person in the chamber and another one that I, he is a Realtor, but I think he wasn't. So on board, these social groups of Realtors at some point, I don't know what he is now, but I could at least reach out to him and say, is there like a meeting that we can come to?
I think that would be a really good group to meet with because we, it would be helpful for them to understand what's going on with this. So as they have people asking them questions, they know what to say.
Yeah, absolutely, virtually. If a person's trying to sell a house at some point and answers a question, well, what school does my kid go to?
It's, well, and I don't think it's a big secret that there are definitely Realtors who are going to tell anybody, move into town, don't buy a single thing, it's off the highway six. That's a super common phrase. And I think for us to come at it and say, we want that to change, not just we want you to stop saying that, but from the school perspective, it's not going to be that disparate for you to steer people. Because I know that, I mean, I, you know, when people move here from out of town, it's super common that they hear things like that. And so we're not going to get everybody on board, but I think, I mean, I know from my, you know, when I look, you know, just look at my own home on Zillow and look at my school rating, it's like, I know it's not true, it's a number, but people really, I mean, there's some, our community's growing and that's absolutely what people depend on. How else do you get information on a school? Is they just look up the number and they're like, I got a conversation with a woman moving from out of town whose husband was a doctor and she's like, no way can we go to Corville Central, that's a one, or whatever the number was. We have to go to Wickham because that's an eight. And that's, that was it. You know, and I had an opportunity at the time to be like, well, go meet the principal, you know? And then they, and they're like, oh yeah, well, Principal Jan, and he was wonderful and that was a great, you know? So it's, and then Realtors can have that influence. And so it's really important for them to get on.
So Sean, you want to try and connect?
I'll reach out to the two people I know and just see what there is available. I think that's kind of what we got to start with, right?
I think as some structure, as I'm thinking about this, if we can have folks make contact and then maybe get back to Janet and I, we can then come up with a list with dates and we can have board members say, hey, I'll do this one, I'll do that one. And we can just kind of, you know, popcorn, who can go to what. So get back to us with a date on that. The chambers, they have lunches once a month. I don't remember what Monday it is, is it Monday?
Steve, do you know?
I'm happy to check with the chamber if that's helpful. All right, what other groups? Oh, I did find my notes from the C W J. They suggested we connect with the Sudanese community. They gave me a contact person, Congolese community as well, gave me a contact person for both of those. Forest View, they mentioned. Broadway, they said they've got a member of their board that could set something up for us there. They suggested the Dream Center, Lakeside.
Or Rose Oaks.
What's that?
Now known as Rose Oaks.
Oh, okay. So I'm happy to make contact with the C W J with those different groups, the contact names that were given to me, to set some of those up.
Would that be more of the maps kind of presentations or still...
I, I, what I took from meeting with them was that it was helpful for them to understand why we're doing this because their first impression was that we were going to put their kids on bus. And they said, we don't like that. Don't put our kids on bus. And, and so I think it's helpful to get out and, and what they said to me, the feedback they gave to me is, it would be helpful for you to help these groups to understand what you're doing and why you're doing it and so they don't feel like they're the ones being pushed around. I do think when we have maps, it would be important to include them as well. But what they were suggesting is that we probably need to move to them. As opposed to having a work session at Southeast and, or not, a work session, a meeting, a work site for Southeast and just waiting for people to show up. Which we'll do some of that too. Okay, so what other groups? Any others that we can think of? Steve, do you have any thoughts of other groups, stakeholders, shareholders?
I think we're going to, some of the groups that we probably want to meet with aren't going to be meeting during the summer. You mentioned DPO is one of those. But again, if the idea is to try to reach out to some of the underrepresented groups, I think you get a good start with that list there.
What other business groups? There's, oh, Paul, there's a group you're a part of. Am I correct, the professionals, consultants?
I'm not a part of it, I'm a, as a board, never been to sit on the panel one time.
Oh, okay. Would you like to contact them?
Sure.
What is the group?
I don't know.
I can't remember what it's called, but something about professionals in the area and leaders. It's a, like a group that you join for like a year and then you, they're all of their training.
I mean, I, I would have to go back and, it's not something to pull up right here, but we did numerous presentations for the bond with a bunch of different groups, so I'd have to pull them. List, it's not the stuff right.
Okay, and actually, since I mentioned that leadership group, why don't I ask about that? Because I, my husband went through it, so he knows the contact person. So if, if that's okay, I'll do that one. And then the bond list, though, that would be helpful, the groups that you met with, going to add.
Kind of like a low reason?
Yeah, Optimus, Optimus Rotary. Yeah, there's, just a few.
Cast in a white net, there's, there's a lot. Hundred Grannies.
Okay, so who wants to take the Optimus and the Rotaries? Is there one, more than one Rotary?
There's a regular Rotary and there's a...
Yeah, the regular.
Morning Rotary, morning and...
I'm optimistic, I'll talk to the Optimus.
Phil? Rotary? Anyone?
I don't know officially how that works, but I know you have to be invited to that kind of...
Well, Steve, you're a member of Rotary, aren't you?
Yeah, and I'm looking to see, they usually set their agendas out fairly far in advance. I'm trying to see if they've got their calendar up. Because I think you'll struggle with some of those groups because they're usually about two months out with agenda setting. So there's, probably be difficult to get on there before September at the earliest.
Phil, you, you did optimists.
Well, I said I could contact, I'm, I'm not, I'm not a member of them, but I.
Neither. I know people that are on the Coroville optimist.
Right.
And the North Carolina optimist, I assume there's an Iowa.
Yes, and there's, there's a sunshine, there's a sunrise group, and then there's another, yeah, there's a.
So which one are you gonna do?
Uh, I will, I, I have, I have, I know, I have a contact of the sunrise optimist.
Sunrise, okay. So, and you're doing the north, say, the portal?
I could probably get Coroville and North Carolina.
Okay. And, you know, we're making a long list here. We may not get all of these done.
And this is pretty much just seeing when some dates are, potentially do it, and if we can fill them in on a calendar.
Yeah, right, it's, it's just making contact and.
It's this aspirational list.
Correct. Quanis.
Quanis. Quanis, okay, anyone who has a connection there?
I mean, Kirkwood has, I can contact them either.
Okay. The Coroville's, uh, tourist and convention hero, I'll get in contact.
As we go to the, we're preferably looking for summer dates, but go in the first couple of months of the year.
Yeah, I, I think the idea.
For opportunities.
Yeah, I think the idea is we need, um, to build allies prior to the MAPS coming out. So, these would ideally be some of the meetings. And some of them, we, we won't just be, we just won't be able to do it.
I think it's not harmful, you know, once MAPS come out, to still be explaining our rationale to people.
Yeah.
You know, I think.
That's a good point.
I think we'll do it at forums, you know, but we don't wanna spend, I think, you know, typically, there's enough work at those forums to do just with the work with the ads. We might, you know, it's nice to have some extra time, and you. And some of this might be presenting groups, and some of it might be talking to the lead, you know, the leadership of the groups. And just saying, you know, here, here's where we're coming from, and, and, you know, I think getting allies is important, I think the main importance is explaining ourselves, so that when people have misconceptions, we can say, no, this, this is where this comes from, this is what we're, we're looking to do. You know, so.
It doesn't, when you look at a map, it's like, well, when we draw it this way, this is how it's gonna help this piece that we showed you in the presentation, right? Let's try and connect. This is together.
So, to answer that question, I, I'm gonna modify what I said. I, I do think it would be good, even after MAPS are out. Um, because these are groups that we can still have this discussion with, and as you said, JP, so. Um, ideally, I think the sooner the better, but, you know, there's only seven of us, and it is summer. So, um, we'll do what we can. Other groups, anyone? Anyone else?
It is pretty good stuff.
Okay. Steve, a, any other ideas?
No, I was just looking out, it looks like most of those rotary calendars are filled up all through September, and through the end of August, beginning of September. So I'm not sure what the optimists will look like, or some of the others, the Quanis and those, they might be the same situation, where they're already booked with speakers.
So then we can just, you know, hopefully get on in September then. And I'll ask Janet and Ruffian if they have others that they'd like to add, um, to the list that they don't feel we've, um, covered here. So, okay. So, let's move on to MAPS.
A lot of numbers to run ahead on.
Quanis?
I mean, I think we, we talked about it. One of these means that if you just look at the, kind of the two mile radius map, those numbers look better than what we currently have. Right, obviously, their populations are really big, or little small in some cases, but, so you can't just say, yeah, let's do that. But, it does at least kind of lead you to the, the possibility of, uh, having some pretty good diversity and balance without doing a lot of busing. But it's hard to dissect that from this aggregate number. I know that there's fifteen hundred kids there within two miles, so there's a lot of risk. I don't know what that means, so I'll just, okay, have my slice, nice little pieces off to put them somewhere else. Or which part of that overlaps with other numbers?
Can I ask, Steve, so this map that you hand, that you gave us?
Yes.
Does that correlate to any of these numbers?
It is the closest school column on here. So, maybe just a quick note, so we've been struggling to get Guide K twelve. Uh, their software was, has not been able to do what we wanted them to do. So this is actually created in what they call ArcGIS. Uh, so Craig and I were reviewing this, Adam's out right now, and so you did this while he was out, which was really helpful. Uh, but when we were looking at this, one of the things that we wanna go back and double check, I'll give you the Horn as an example. If you look at the south end of Horn, even just using your fingers as a measurement, I'm not sure that some of those south end streets are actually closer to Horn than they are to hills.
No, why would that be?
That may be because there's some road issues that we can't see on here. So, um, we need to do a little more digging into it. I would imagine that for the most part, it is fairly accurate. Uh, but there may be some issues with some of that, uh, that routing process that ArcGIS uses. Uh, but at least it gives us a good approximation. Uh, and I think probably the one thing that you can take away from this, um, is, uh, I, you know, that idea of neighborhood schools, which is if you have students go to school at the school that's closest to their, uh, their home, uh, creates a couple of problems for us. One of them is that we've got some areas that are incredibly densely populated. So if you look at, uh, some of those numbers on there, now you'd be trying to put seven hundred and fifty-five kids in at, uh, Horn Elementary School, just because you think about the apartment complexes that are, are right, uh, adjacent, uh, to Horn. Uh, but I think one of the other things that you don't see on here, which we talked about last time, uh, we have seen a significant reduction in the number of kids that are on voluntary transfer. Uh, but those students that tend to take advantage of voluntary transfer are students who have the means to do so. Uh, and so the eight hundred and fifty kids that are still on voluntary transfer at the elementary level, uh, tend to skew the demographics. So regardless of what changes you make to attendance areas, if you don't change voluntary transfer, and people don't like the new maps that you draw, they will simply choose to go to a school that they prefer to go to.
And what's the current, what's the policy?
Policy is that you may apply to go to any school that has open seats. Uh, and that, uh, we review those on an annual basis. That's one of the reasons that there are about half the students participating now. Cause parents don't necessarily wanna go through that process on an, an annual, uh, basis. But depending on how favorably people look at the maps you draw, we could potentially see a significant upsurge in the number of people that apply for voluntary transfers, which could then mitigate some of the results of the work that you do for a rezoning process. So, I do think that's something that you need to make sure that you take into consideration when you're, thinking about how that might impact maps you might draw.
I mean, I, you know, I guess for my mind, if we're doing this work, that would be one of the first things I would just get. You know, I wanna have a policy in place, so if somebody has extenuating circumstances, I wanna be sensitive to that. That, that are things that I can think of, or a reason that they might want, but not like in your school, that, that doesn't cut it for me.
Maybe one example. We do that at Liberty High right now. So, uh, we do have, uh, some students that have moved into Liberty High, and they've done so because, um, the process that we use for requests for voluntary transfer into Liberty High is the same that you would use for a request, uh, to open enroll in or out of the district after the deadline. So the state sets some criteria. Uh, and if you meet those criteria, then we, uh, that we then grant those, uh, requests for that voluntary transfer. I think one of the other things you can see from this is that there's, um, especially when you look at that, Sean, you talked about the two mile, uh, radii issue there. Uh, and remember, those maps were the circle maps, I didn't add those to the agenda, but they weren't by driving route. But there's obviously a significantly, uh, smaller gap between the, uh, SES status in particular, when you look at that two mile map. Even the one mile map, um, has a remarkably different, uh, set of markers on it than if you look at the current certified enrollment for the last school year. So, what we know is that the neighborhoods are less, uh, starkly divided, uh, based on who lives there, but are more so based on who goes to school there. So we know that kids are opting out of their neighborhood school, uh, in order to go somewhere that they consider to be a, a better choice.
Yeah, I mean, the two mile, you know, if you just take the, the raw numbers, that frankly, gets us close to our board goal.
Keep in mind that one, if I were to draw that map like this, it would be a series of overlapping concentric circles. And so part of that then is how do you go inside there and surgically draw those such that you get something that looks like this number on it?
And donuts are really weird.
So I'm just gonna give you some numbers to visualize it. So at Wickham, seventeen percent of Wickham students do not live in the way that attended the zone. Kirkwood has twenty percent of their students that live in Kirkwood are not attending Kirkwood. Kirkwood and Wickham are quite close.
Yeah.
Didn't you run numbers of people who went from school that they're supposed to?
I did, and I apologize, I don't have those with me, but yeah. You, those are the live-in numbers, if you remember that from a couple of work sessions ago. Um, and that would essentially eliminate voluntary transfer as an option, and require that students go to school in their home neighborhood, and then that, uh, achieved a significant, uh, change to that gap.
Do you say there's like eight hundred kids?
About eight fifty.
And I was curious how many are coming from out of the district, and it's not many. It's, I, I'm gonna go reading this, it looks like there's only sixty-six.
Uh, part of the issue is we just don't enroll. So if you, if you, uh, request an open enrollment into the district, um, I mean, think about the number of portables we have all over the district, there aren't a lot of empty seats from that analysis, and so, um, if you wanted to come into a school and it's already full, when you, uh, when you request to open enroll into a district, you don't get to choose your school. You say, I would like to open enroll into the Iowa City Community School District, we say yes, and your placement is here. If you would like that placement, that's fine, you accept it, if that's not where you wanna go, then you decline it. Um, and so it, it goes to only those places where there's open seats, and we don't have a lot of schools that open seats.
But you have a list of the open seats at all the schools.
Uh, well, if happens, yeah, what happens usually is that, uh, people will come in and, and it's not uncommon for them to say, I have a first and fourth grader, and we say, okay, then we need a school that has an open seat in first and fourth grade. Uh, and that makes it more problematic to find a location for them.
And which schools do we have the most unused capacity rate now? For, with trends from, I know, you know, it's gonna change on the first.
Yeah, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Is that?
Well, if you look at how many are transferring in, I mean, that tells you that there's a high percentage of open seats. Wickham has the highest percentage transferring in, seventeen percent. Uh, let's see.
Who has it?
Longfellow has the second highest at thirteen percent.
Does Hoover have it to be higher? I don't know, students that live in that area in Hoover here.
Uh, let me look at Hoover. Yeah, oh, you're right, eighteen, actually, I apologize, eighteen is, uh, the highest. For Hoover, transferring in. At Hoover's school, it's less than two miles from a lot of the schools where this, um, negative, negative right side. So, so, now it's. I apologize, Lincoln is, um, fifteen percent, no, third, uh, yeah.
So what next?
I'm having a hard time figuring out how we do take these little.
Oh, it's gonna, it's gonna look like a very, very good map, but I, but we have to start somewhere. I mean, you know, we got a pretty well-written and thoroughly researched email about the school pairing. You know, that made some really, really good points about saving money and efficient programming. And if we look, you know, really, I, you know, if we're, you know, just doing Longfellow and Twain, Mann and Lincoln, and I think Kirkwood and Wickham, I think you got some schools that are really close with some disparities that you could gain something from there. Because I know, I'm sure if you drew this map with this two mile radius and you tried to, it's gonna look really, you know, you're gonna have stuff looping around over here and catching this, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna make a lot of sense just looking at it, it's gonna look very, and with some pairings, you may get, you may avoid some of that, you may be able to get it a little more.
As you start thinking about going down that road, you know, one of the things that, uh, we did, um, might be two or three rounds ago on this process, um, was to say, for a neighborhood school concept, if you were to start with the, the one mile radii and assign all the students that live within, actually, the one mile driving distance to the school, and then, uh, where there are overlaps, start to look at how those assignments affect the demographic status of the, uh, schools. And then look at the areas that are outside of that, and then look at the assignment of those students who are outside of that one mile or two mile driving distance, and do those assignments in such a way that it's targeted specifically towards addressing those gaps. Uh, that makes the maps look a little less spidery and a little bit more logical. Uh, and, and like I said, it's been a couple, three iterations since we've gone through that exercise, but that creates something that has a little bit more logic to it. Um, but it started with that idea of what is a neighborhood school? Who should go to school there? How do you make those assignments? There are fewer schools that have that Venn diagram overlap at one mile than there are at two. And so we started with the one mile as a, as a place to.
I mean, what I don't wanna do is have people do a whole bunch of work and have a torn heart at, at forums. So that, you know, that, but, there's a lot of work that's gonna have to go into the front end of this to get to a place where we can really get out where people are gonna pay attention, and they're not in twenty nineteen September going, oh, what do you mean, I go to school here? Cause, cause some of that will absolutely happen, and but we have to, so I think that's where I'm at here with this, I think we've kinda seen this before, um, you know, this map, uh, we haven't exactly seen. And so now it's like, well, what does that next piece look like that's? And, and I don't know, from your staff standpoint, is, is it better to do that work in July, early August? Is it better to do that in, I, you know, I don't know, I mean, I know when, cause then we have something to start with, and then if we have feedback, what we can tweak. But what we can't do is go out with, and then let the community sort of build our, build, I think we have to put those building blocks in place based on what we're looking for. And then we can go back and make some tweaks, explaining our rationale along the way. Um, but we, but we need, I think we have to see that, so, because that's what's gonna spur the reaction, is people saying, oh wait, now I go to school here. Well, maybe so, and we can have that discussion. But without that, I don't think we're ever gonna get to that place. Until people see a map that affects it now, I don't think they're gonna come out and have an, express an opinion. After that, there will be a lot, lots of opinions. But I, to me, I think, you know, we've done, I think, in my mind, you guys have done the background really well for us here with, um, with this PowerPoint. I think that it explains the rationale. I think it has some really good data that shows where we're at, you know? I feel really comfortable kinda talking about how this, you know, this is, rather than a district like, uh, well, not, I mean, Des Moines is not a super fair example, but rather than having something happen like it's happened in Des Moines, where you've got, or, you know, I was reading an article today about San Francisco, that's. got, or, you know, I was reading an article today about San Francisco, that's an awful school district. It's terrible. They don't fund it, and none, and they don't, none of the people send their kids there. And they pay their teachers less than we do, and their principals. It's a disaster, because people leave, and then you're left with the people have no choice. And so to explain to people like, well, is that the kind of community you wanna live in? You know, where you've got white flight? Or you wanna live in something that looks more like Madison or some other school districts that have done some different stuff and said, hey, we, you know, let's celebrate this, and let's make it a strength, because it is a strength, let's recognize it as a strength, and let's see, you know, because right now, we do have pockets of people who just, you know, they, they live very close together, and they're totally wrong about people who live a mile away from them, because they don't know them, and they've never had the opportunity to meet them. You know, and then we see some of that fall out, and all of a sudden, when they're going to junior high together, kids don't, they don't, they don't know how to integrate, you know? They just, they don't have that experience. And so our high schools have been very self-segregating, because those are the kids you know, those are the kids you're in elementary school with, you know? Or you wanna live in a community that really appreciates this, and, you know, I, my daughter's birthday party was not something that would've happened where I grew up, but to go to a kindergarten birthday party or first grade, see just a real diverse mix of folks from different countries and speaking different languages, it's like, wow, this is really an advantage. This is gonna help kids who go to school in that environment, it's gonna give them the wake up, because that's the world. And, and I, not everybody's gonna buy that, but I'm sure there are some people who aren't even thinking of things in that way, they're not framing it, and they see it as a detriment. And they're, you know, cheating their kids out of, out of the education they could have, because we've got that diversity here. It's, I mean, that's our advantage, you know? People come in with all kinds of worldviews and all kinds of perspectives, and that's so rich, and we have it. And just because of the way housing policy works and banking, you know, the history of banking policy over the last fifty years, we're in a situation like, from what Sarah told us, most other college towns, and that college towns are the worst, you know, the worst of this kind of, kind of segregation. And so we've got the data, we've got the population, we've got the facilities, we've got that. You know, that's not, you know, that's not common. If we were having to scramble over, you know, dealing with closing eight of our schools or how, you know, we don't have to deal with that, you know, that's settled. And now it's just about, well, how do we use these facilities to give the best educational experience possible in our community to everybody? So I think we've got the argument, I think we've got the framework, I think we do, we're gonna have to see the maps. And I don't know how easy it is to say, here's an example of what it could look like.
If we've got some pretty, they don't have to be that tight, but if we've got a pretty good idea of what it is you wanna see, we can put that together. It's, it's time-consuming but not impossible type of thing, so, I mean, we can definitely do that. I, I don't know if you need to go out and talk to groups first and get feedback, and then tell us to draw maps based on what you hear from them, or if you want us to put something together before you go talk to them.
I think you need to start working on it regardless, whether it goes out publicly or not, I think we could kind of vet that a little bit, but I, I think it's gonna take too long to wait.
So, so what we've talked about here is one approach, where you guys essentially come up with a map and you come to us with it. We give you some guidelines. Another approach would be to start with what we have, and say, we're gonna take some building blocks, and we're gonna say, okay, in this neighborhood, there are sixty students, and here's the racial linkup. I know you can't give us FRL status, but what happens if we move those sixty students over to this school? Okay, so we need to move sixty students out of that school. Okay, what building block could we take there? What neighborhood? Keeping the idea of neighborhoods together.
Yeah, and, and in my head, yes, I wanna keep neighborhoods together, but that doesn't necessarily, that doesn't necessarily even go to the closest school. But if you live in a neighborhood, I don't wanna go into that neighborhood and start it. So you're not going, you know, you're gonna go to school with the person you live right next to. You may not go to this, you may go to this school instead of that school, but that, you know, I think that's, I wanna be mindful of that. So, so, because the neighborhoods themselves are where, I mean, that's where the pockets are, that tend to, tend to be in these neighborhoods.
And one of our tenants in, in the list of appendix five, I think it is, is to try and limit the amount of, is it transitions or change? I'm, the word isn't coming to me, but there we've got things that are working, I would question why would we change them?
Except now, yeah, except when you get your dominoes.
But, I mean, in terms of balance, if we've got, an example like Greg Paul talked about is the Breckenridge neighborhood, they're already at Lemmy. As of now, as of 2019, they won't be, but there's a building block, we could say, this building block, send them back to Lemmy. How many kids? What does that look like?
And, you know, that's the thing, Steve, how many areas are there like that where it's?
That, that's part of the challenge, because when you do that, iterative process, as opposed to giving us directions and say, draw maps that look like this. If you give us directions to say, draw maps that look like this, we can draw maps that look like that. If you say, keep this group here, and then tell us what the impact is, and we come back and say, okay, now Lemmy is, make it number, sixty students overcrowded, so we have to move sixty students, where do you want us to move them? Now you tell us you wanna move them here, okay, we'll move them there, and we come back and we say, okay, now that school's forty students overcrowded, where do you wanna move them? What's gonna happen with that is, that process of drawing that kind of iterative map is gonna take months to do. Whereas if you say, we want it to look like this, that's something that we can go back and draw and bring back to you. Otherwise, we're gonna really struggle, I think, to get anything done in a reasonable timeframe. I think that'll be a real challenge.
But, and I'm assuming you were talking to Michael Philly?
Oh, yeah.
Which I thought had some, some really good stuff on there, too. Now, if we were to, to just give you directions, say, well, let's look at some pairings, and see what kind of operational efficiencies we could gain there, and, and what we could do in balance, that's something you could, that's.
That we could do, yeah. That's a lot easier to do.
And because of operational efficiency, I mean, we all, Craig's not here, but we're coming up on some lean, unspent balance years, we know, and I know we're gonna come out of it, and so I'm not worried, but I am mindful of it, and I know Craig's gonna be talking a lot. We're gonna hear it a lot in those years, how lean it is, and how, how we need to be mindful. So looking for operational efficiencies with, I, I mean, you know, think for me about pairings, it creates another transition. However, if we gain both operational efficiency and balance, that could be really worth the trade-off. And it, you know, people do it in other places, and it, and it works, so.
Better achievement results, I think that's really what we're trying to get.
And that's the thing, is we really wanna get this achievement.
Something that's been kind of nagging at me as we've talked about parent schools, and even boundaries, I guess, and this is probably a conversation earlier today, but I'm gonna couch it in context, what we're talking about is the clean feeder system that we've, you know, latched on to. If you talk about Kirkwood and Wickham as a pair, are they not going to differ?
They go to different.
They go to different secondary schools.
And it would be the same for?
So, I, I'm not saying it's either good or bad, I think that that needs to at least be part of the conversation. If you look at the element, what is it gonna affect down the road as far as? Because if we keep a clean feeder system and we change elementary boundaries, high school students will be going to the wrong school at that point.
Yeah.
So I just want that to be at least in people's heads, that, that's a thing. Even not elementary kids would be affected by it.
Right.
So, although, it's something to think about. Or you just leave the secondary alone at that point, and it changes everything.
Well, what I'd like to see is, so the reason Kirkwood, and Kirkwood's easier to change in Alexander, just from geography, you know, it's easier to affect those numbers, so I'll just use that as an example. But if Kirkwood doesn't look like Kirkwood looks now, then you don't have that same, well, or you might, you know, say you have some of those FRL kids that are going to Wickham, and then they're just assigned to Wickham, and they, they're, not with your pair, the pairing is gonna.
Right.
Throw that all in the, although if I wanna think super long-term, and think about that report we got that said predicted about a thousand new kids in that north area, we don't have the junior high capacity for that, even kind of close right now, if there are a thousand extra kids. So if we're talking twenty years down the road, what, you know, that's, is that a middle, six, seven, eight format? Is that a, but in any way, I think it's gonna disrupt some of this clean, I mean, right now, we have three junior highs and three high schools, we can do it. But fifteen years from now, twenty, it may, that picture might be different, but that doesn't mean we wanna bite that off right now, because that's gonna be a.
A year ago, we had three junior highs and two high schools, so.
Yeah, you're right.
It wasn't that long ago, though.
So that is a.
Two that those three fed.
Yes.
It's a comprehensive.
That's what we said.
So that is a key component of the discussion, though, particularly in the case of Kirkwood. Because if Kirkwood is thirty percent FRL, then doesn't make sense for it to go to thirty.
Right.
Or do the secondary boundaries stay exactly as they are now, and Kirkwood becomes thirty percent FRL? And it's not a school-based feeder, but a line feeder.
A geography-based.
Geography-based feeder.
Yeah.
Do you follow what I'm saying?
I think it just needs to be part of the conversation, and we're gonna get that answer tonight, and that is, we, we're focused on elementary boundaries now, which is a great thing, because prior to that, we were focused on secondary boundaries, we, people before me, but now we're focused on elementary, but it does affect other things, the current system, so it's.
Every, every change we do is a change in something else.
Love that. I like the thought process of, okay, start with what we have, let's maybe move this little piece, and it's, okay, move another little piece out, that's a great process, and that's, it's what we did when we were doing Grant, right? We had a map, we're like, well, let's just draw this little line up here, and draw this little line down here, and see how that affects the numbers. But short of all of us sitting at a computer, having access to that software and all playing around, it becomes an iterative process that Steve's talking about. I don't know if it's kind of thing we can sit there.
Although we.
So we're gonna play around with it.
We did that in 2016, and, and it did take longer, which is part of the reason I've been pushing this, that we're behind, it does take longer, but I felt like it, it was helpful. We, we all came up, what we did was we came up with a list of building blocks, and then, and it wasn't like, you know, we give you two building blocks, and then you have to make something new for next week. It was, it was more than that at one time, a list of twenty building blocks. Okay, so we know, right now, if we move this here, we can move this puzzle piece here, we can move this puzzle piece here, and we can kind of work it out during the meeting. See what I'm saying?
I would rather take the time to get it right than to rush it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we're making, I, that's what I'm trying to be mindful of, the, the people who are gonna be most invested in this are people whose kids are going to school right now. When we're doing this for kids who are gonna go to school a decade from now and twenty years from now, I mean, we're, you know, we're making some, because these kinds of change, you know, we, the district has never done these kinds of changes on the scale at the elementary level. And so even if it does take a little longer, I think it's worth it to, to have a thorough.
I agree with that, and that we're not setting boundaries for twenty years from now, we're setting precedents for years from now, is still what we're trying to do. And I'll tell you, I had a conversation this weekend with a retired principal, not from our district, he was actually a principal in a lot of different districts, and he talked about his different experiences in other parts of the country. He was like, because I was explaining what we were trying to do, and how we were trying to get the message out, and he's like, you know, a lot of boards just say, this year, you're going to this school, and the next year they say, you know what, this year you're going to this school, and they just do it, and people have accepted it, because that became the reality there. And I, I said, that, that sounds great, but that first year's a little scary to try and just do that, right? So I don't know how many years they had gone through that process before, became accepting if that's how it worked out, but.
I don't know if this community's gonna.
Well, you know, I think, but it's important to set that precedent, that, okay, this is where we wanna go, and it's, maybe not every year we're saying, okay, now you're going to a different school, but, but we have to at least get people comfortable with the idea that they may move schools, but it's a good enough reason that they can accept the fact that they moved schools. That's not gonna be immediately accepted by, right? Hopefully, that's the point, is that eventually, when those kids that are going to school twenty years from now, it is more, more than be accepted, and not just gonna go backwards every time this comes up again, or go nowhere every time.
I think one of the things you have to make sure you think about with that is that there's always been a strong push, just like with voluntary transfer, to do grandfathering. And I think that those, those two issues, I think, are something that, as you think about any change, you really need to think about, maybe to use your language, Sean, what's the precedent moving forward? Are we gonna continue to grandfather? Are we gonna continue to allow voluntary transfer? Because that creates an enormous workaround for whatever solution you're attempting to implement. Because as soon as you put that in place, and we had problems before with grandfathering, that included bootstrapping, and, you know, you could bring all your younger siblings with you, as long as there was a kid that was in this grade level, you could continue to move them forward, and those are all methodologies that will circumvent the solutions that you're looking for. And so that's gonna be a really hard decision, just like the first year that you alluded to. But at the same time, if you want this to work, you may have to think about having that hard conversation at the community level about, we're not going to do voluntary transfer anymore, and we're not going to do grandfathering.
Steve, with all those lines, just, and I don't want this to be a deciding factor, but say you take a school like Twain, and they're at seventy-eight percent, seventy-nine percent, and you're able to get them down to that fifty percent, what effect would something like that have on some of the funding that that school gets? For example, the one preschool that's there.
Could, there could be impacts on preschool funding, Title I funding, some of our ELL funding, our, some of our AFRIC funding. I mean, those are all things that are related to demographic characteristics of the population of the students.
Because those needs don't go away.
No, they don't. When they get, you know, there, there is an argument, I'm not saying I support this, but there's an argument that allowing that concentration allows you to then gather resources that you might not otherwise qualify for as a district.
Right, and I'm not, that's what I'm saying, I don't wanna keep it just for that reason, I'm just, you know, thinking this all through.
Where would it be running?
School nutrition's a good, a good example, you know, there are places where we can have, because of the population of students, we're able to provide universal breakfast and lunch, and when your population becomes more affluent, you lose that opportunity, that can be a real struggle.
But I think what we see from the data, and not just here, but those recent, it doesn't work. Yeah, you get Title I funding, but your test scores aren't.
Right, yeah, I'm not saying, I'm thinking, you know.
We just need to be cognizant of the fact that that's gonna be a challenge, because we'll lose some resources.
The goal is to, is to improve the product.
The other thing, I think, Steve, that we are gonna need to be mindful of is staffing, too. You know, when you have, you know, the Twains and Kirkwoods that have staff who have been there doing it in the trenches, not every, not all of our staff are ready for that, and we're used to that. So we're gonna, and so probably that what this is gonna come with is moving staff around, which is something we haven't done very much up to the past, that we have one hundred percent authority to do, because you don't wanna do that, you know, you don't wanna just say, no, now you're teaching over here, but I think some of that is gonna have to be, I guess I'm a, I'm a rip the mandate off fast kind of a guy, and, and I think, because the truth is, when you have a board that's working together and on the same page, you don't always get that. And I think, I'd like to see us take it, especially for something this big, because it's gonna take some fortitude, and it's gonna take some, we're gonna stick it out, and we're gonna have to deal with a lot of kerfuffle along the way. And so I think if you draw it out, you risk not getting it done. I, I mean, I think that's what's happened, right? We, this is probably a solid twenty years, if not thirty, where our community's been changing way faster than it can keep up with. And here we are in this situation where the amount of data we've been looking at, the amount of data we have, it's, it's all sort of pointing in the direction of, you know, we did the round, a great manding, but it's clearly not a magic, there are no, I don't know. have any magic bullets, but we need to look in combination. And I think if we have a board that's willing to stick it out, and we start doing that hard work right now and stick to it and see it through and.
Another idea would be for you to give us the number, the places where there is capacity. So like, for example, New Hoover, we know there's, there's capacity there. That's a no brainer. Longfellow, I think, might have some new capacity. I just did the net.
Once you start changing those numbers, if you're still using RAM, you have.
Hold on. For example, Wickham has apparently a net capacity of seven, with their transfers out and transfers in, they're getting seventy-one students. So they apparently have capacity to accept seventy-one students. If we change who the seventy-one students are, it's no doubt going to change the school. Follow what I'm saying?
I do.
Marcus, we'll draw the lines so that the empty seats are in places where, where we can let people move in and out of.
Well, it, it gives us, it, it's the, the piece of, okay, so if we know that we've got room here and we move this over here, well, that frees up room there. And, you know, we can move that there, instead of it being a, okay, now we have to move this out of here. It's like, okay, well, we know we've got that to start with.
Use the empty space as the first domino.
As the first domino, yeah. I'm sorry, Paul, what were you saying?
Well, I would say, when we start changing boundaries, if we're still using a RAM model that can change the staffing there, thus the capacity there, because you have to.
True. So I think I would be thinking of it in terms of if there was no RAM, how many seats? It's, if, going back to that, those numbers that Duane gave us initially, that were just, how many bodies can go in this building if we went with max class sizes? I think that would be the only way to do it, because we can't predict where the RAM schools are gonna be.
Although, if you look at the two mile radius, and I, I know it's not this clean, but if the numbers started to look something more like that, we would, we would have fewer, you know, we'd have much, far fewer RAM schools and need, and hopefully, they don't need to have that level.
And then maybe the class size would be more even everywhere.
Uh, yeah, more even.
Just so I don't lose my, my thought, to view some of, you know, staffing potentially moving as we change populations at schools and things. Going back to our very original conversation, is that a group we would want to give our little presentation to, is like I C A group or something like that, to let staff know, hey, this is pretty big deal, and.
Pretty important.
It may make some of your folks have to.
Very good point. Very, very good point, yeah. J P, would you like to contact them? Or not?
Do you want to see the, the messenger in the mic?
Hi.
It's just a matter of contacting, get on the agenda. Figure out later who goes to it.
I have no idea.
So where, where are we at in terms of process? What, I've heard a discussion of parent schools, I've heard a discussion of Steve just give us some apps, which is a lot of work, by the way. I, and then, of course, I, I, you've heard me talk about the where are the seats approach. And then there's also the question of, when I use the word magnet, I'm not referring to a magnet that would cost money, but for example, a year-round school magnet, which of course would cost something, but it's not like a STEM magnet that would have a huge additional cost. There's that option. Maybe that's something that comes after we've done the other work and we see this is a problematic area, we have trouble.
I think we know that Alexander's gonna be our hottest spot. If you just look at the map.
Enwood.
Enwood, yeah, so that, I think that neck of the woods. And when we think about folks who are on free and loose lunch, families who are dealing with that, that I have a year-round school wall. So just one to target your population and, and help folks out, you know? I mean, that makes holding a job a lot easier, when you don't have to find and pay for daycare in the summer. Because I do think there's, I'm sure there are people in Corahville who would drive to the southeast side of Iowa City for a year-round school, cause it's such a different offering, and it, and it really changes the way you can structure your family life. And it really fits, you know, most working folks who don't get summers off. That's why I think that kind of a magnet would, would work, because it's, and I think, if we've seen, you know, I've talked to people who started off with one school or one district, and not all the districts around them do it, because they were like, oh, they were getting open enrollments, or people were like, this is a great idea, it's just.
I think one of, one of our biggest challenges with those, which we found out, I wanna say it was two rounds ago, is because we're so full at the elementary level, so if you wanted to do a magnet at Alexander and you wanted to do year-round, if you wanted to ensure, this was one of the big conversations that we had, how many of the seats are available for neighborhood kids, and then how many seats are available for kids that you want to transfer in? And then, just make numbers up here, let's say that there are five hundred seats in the school, you want two hundred and fifty seats for the neighborhood kids, that means you now have to find two hundred and fifty seats for those students that are displaced, and our struggle is, we don't have two hundred and fifty seats. And so we, we said, it's, it's hard for us to get that flywheel turning, because there's nowhere to put the kids that we need to displace to create the space. Cause the presumption is, we're gonna have two hundred and fifty kids from somewhere else that are gonna come in and fill that spot up, but.
They're not coming from the same place.
Well, they're not all coming from the same place, and how far away are they coming from? So I can't send these kids there, so how do I know how to?
And that may be a discussion we have with the next F M P, because the truth is, we have, I mean, we got the bond pass to meet our needs.
Yeah.
Not a lot of extra.
No.
Well, and so we may have to, you know, do this, and then see where, and then that can be part of that F M P discussion, is like, you know, we'd like to try some new things, but to do that, we're gonna need some more capacity. And that might even be a selling point.
Frankly, if we need more capacity, we could add it very quickly, but not destroy, not destroying a elementary school that's already built and air-conditioned and has students in it right now. Because you take that capacity out, if you leave that capacity there, you have capacity. And there are a lot of kids that are in the two-mile radius in that school, and that could help you a lot.
That's what goes to the.
Well, maybe there's a rethinking on that.
Operational efficiency argument there as well.
Well, that's, that's, that's as part of the discussion.
And, and along those lines, the New Hoover is not nearly full with the twenty nineteen boundaries. So I think it's, what, a five hundred capacity school? I think maybe it was gonna have three hundred students in it. So there's a big chunk of Alexander, not that it's as easy as just take two hundred and move up, but you ship the dominos, you know?
And I, you know, just to that point, Phil, I, I do appreciate that. And I think if we try to do that, we can't do any of this. That, that, that argument will take over the process, and it'll be the same argument. And I don't, and I don't think we'll get buy-in. And I, and I think that means we'll be stuck with the exact same, I mean, that's, that's my perspective, just from that angle, that we're trying to get buy-in, we're trying to kinda get people together for a, a big change. And I think that would further, just kinda keep that division divided. And I don't, and I don't think any, something like this, I don't know if it can weather, weather that storm, personally. Even though I can appreciate capacity argument, I don't know how far we can get during pushing that.
Well, I think, I'm looking at short-term, kinda mid-term, long-term type of solutions, right? And as we've said all along, the boundaries was not the only solution, but it can maybe be one to most quickly implement. And I think, as we're talking about precedents, if we get people used to the fact that, all right, boundaries are gonna change to help, you know, create some diversity in our schools, and you're used to that, then when you go, come back with, okay, now we're gonna do parent schools, we're gonna have a magnet school, or whatever else, we're gonna be going for that, boundaries will also change along with that. People will be more used to it. I mean, trying to get everything planned out, how we're gonna do it at the outset is probably more than we wanna buy off. I think it's warrants, at least looking at some of the parent school stuff, cause I see that maybe as the more mid-term, and the magnet maybe more long-term. But, I don't know, we have done quite a bit of work, right, with magnet, looked at options there, so maybe it's not as.
I mean, I guess, to me, the next step, the most logical one seems boundary. What can we gain there? I mean, I, I don't think it hurts to, you know, I don't know if you include parent schools in that boundary. I think if you look at, pull it out and just look at what you gain in operational efficiency with parent schools, a, a couple, some of them that are, are really geographically close, and that can inform this discussion on boundaries. I'm afraid, again, trying to sell boundary changes and parent schools, and I think digesting that all at once, kinda what you're thinking we plan out. Now, if we see there's some really good operational efficiency, that may start to drive our conversation a lot more to say, we don't have a lot of choice when we get to those one percent unspent balance years, and we're still gonna have teachers who want a raise and deserve one. And we have those really tricky conversations, you know, that's, it's great when we're all getting along with our biggest teacher degree, but it's not so great when we're not.
So if, that's then an efficiency in a financial discussion.
Yes.
Which is a, which is different.
It's different. But as it bubbles up, it really.
Yeah, oh, impact, there's, there's some.
But some, excuse me, but some of these pairings help our numbers. And, 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 you know, whenever, if, if, if that's our goal, I don't think we can reject, completely, looking at that model, because if it improves our numbers, which we're trying to do, because we recognize that when you, if, if, if you're gonna take that argument that that's the, that's where the opportunity lies in, in changing that, and if we compare and, and improve those, plus get an operational efficiency on it, I think we should be looking at that as well. Instead of just, no, we're gonna go in and slice and dice all the, everything up, just to, just to get to that, just with the boundary thing, but, no, I, I, I think that, that, you know, looking at the pairings where it would improve our numbers and everything, just by that alone, I think that that's something that should be, you know, if it's not that difficult to produce maps and then look at that, I think that's something we should at least give a thought to.
I, I agree, and I, and I like the idea of Sean's, you know, our now approach, our soon approach, and our, in the future approach. Amy has told us that we can't accomplish parent schools by fall twenty nineteen. So we know that can't be our only solution for twenty nineteen, but maybe that could be something for twenty twenty. Maybe we go ahead and build the boundaries, understanding that they're not ideal, but when they're paired in twenty twenty, they will be.
Hey, I will agree that Michael's email, I mean, it did point out a very singular opportunity, but you're talking two months from now, telling teachers in the building, hey, we're gonna try something out, see if this works, right? And it is a very singular opportunity, and I, it's something that I wouldn't want to miss out on, but it is a lot to ask.
Staff.
With no warning, really. But it is, it's an interesting, oh, you've got the two schools in a school, you could change how the classes.
So you know what? If, if it turns out that we decide to do that for twenty twenty, that's all those same kid, I mean, you're gonna be getting all those same kids, that.
Hopefully, definitely more warning, with, with staff in particular, in that.
Yeah, oh, for sure, yeah.
Cause I don't know how, I'm curious if that works now, like, two different schools being in the school, and other doing other things, so maybe they'd like it, and a different, you know, team of teachers to work, and I would be like, find it to be interesting, but.
Is that, is that too much, Steve, to be looking at some pairings for operational efficiency and maybe thinking about that and?
Well, I think if you've got some targeted pairings that you're looking at, I think we can definitely give you those.
I mean, Man Lincoln, Longfellow Twain, Kirkwood Wickham.
And Shimick.
Or Man Shimick. Yeah, I mean, I think those close, you know, where we have some disparity and geographic closeness, I think those are our best opportunities. But I'd also like to see it just from, because I wanna see good numbers on operational efficiency. I wanna see what that.
Sure.
With busing and all those other things, cause a lot of Shimick kids are getting bussed in to Shimick, and now if you're gonna, and it isn't that much further to Man, but if you're way out here on the perimeter, it might.
I don't know if I can give you busing.
Okay.
Staffing, yeah. Busing is a more of a challenge.
Well, let's look at staffing, cause that's.
I would also for seven days.
Well, and there isn't an incremental cost for mileage on the busing, I mean, by gas, yes, by gas mileage, but the bus costs what the bus costs for one bus. One driver with benefits.
The question is, do you have fewer routes or not? And that's the part that's hard, cause we actually have to have Durham run it on VersaTrans, and they need an attendance area for it, yeah.
So the kids coming in from Shimick, they can go where they go.
Okay.
Same cost.
Okay.
And then just also facility-wise, you know, the Twain, Longfellow needs five kindergarten classrooms.
Right.
What's that, what's it look like for?
Oh, because of the, uh.
The stories, too.
Yeah, so we talked about that briefly, like, when Man wants the upper floors, you can't really have a K two.
Right.
It's K inside.
Let me sit down and work with that. I think we can at least give you some thinking on that, we can draw some maps, we can give you some demographics, we can talk to you a little bit about staff savings, talk to Craig to get some ideas about some operational savings. They'll be ballpark numbers, but.
Another question, facility-wise, since we talked about playgrounds, how they're specifically K two playgrounds, yeah, three, six, I mean, is that?
Oh, yeah, those things all play into it. I guess I would, I'd be less focused on those to start with.
Right.
Cause they're just, they're single.
Right.
I mean, the bathrooms, playgrounds, if, if that's what you decide you wanna go with, it's gonna be a one-time renovation expense, it's not gonna be an ongoing expense.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. I think there's a lot, there's a lot of ripples like that.
And there's some places we're renovating anyway, so, you know.
The staffing is the big money.
Yeah.
Big.
Eighty-four cents out of every dollar we spend is on somebody.
Staffing.
Yep.
We are getting something that we can get no other way, cause we're, we're touching on that eighty-two percent.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four, right? So we, anything we can do to make that more efficient is where we're gonna get, that's how we're gonna affect, if we are going to affect that unspent balance, that's where we're gonna do it.
So we're gonna get some data on some pairings. What else do we want?
And then I think we're gonna look at the map. We wanna see a map that says, I think we, I, I, I mean, I guess, I just, you know, rather, I don't know, like, maybe the building blocks, but if we can just say, what's a map that takes the one mile, and what does that look like? And make it as, as non-spidery as it can be.
What I might do is, what, what if, what if we did the one mile driving distance? And did it from each of the schools, so that you could get a data sheet that looked like this, but was driving distance, not radii.
Okay.
Recognizing that there'll be some overlap, so let's think Garner Path, right? There's gonna be some overlap with that, so you'll have some kids that'll count it, be counted twice. But then you would be able to see, you know, what does the neighborhood look like if they went to their closest school? We can then give you a number of students that are unassigned, who didn't get picked up in an attendance area because they live further than a mile out. So you know who those kids are.
Okay.
And, and not the two mile, cause there's too much overlap. I think that'd be, those numbers would be hard to understand, but at least it would give you a core, so you could look at it and say, hey, this looks like we're moving in the right direction. Because then the next part of that process would be, how do you assign the unassigned kids? And I think if you would look at a map like that, you might be able to then give us some direction on how to assign the unassigned kids, and we could come back with another On how to assign the unassigned kids and we could come back with another iteration that showed you what that looked like.
Yeah.
And then I think another thing to look at is when I see this one mile radius numbers and you go to a school like Elsie 58.
Mm-hmm.
So then you're gonna have to fill out the school.
But remember, so now you do that, so I'll just pull this one out. So you do that and you say, okay, here's your one mile. And here's your one mile of Alexander and your one mile with Weber and your one mile with Borlaug. So you're gonna have a whole bunch of unassigned kids down here. Because they're not gonna be within a mile of a school. So then, when you're able to look at that and say, what would that attendance area look like? Cause instead of them having contiguous colors, you know, that are all running into each other. You're gonna have a lot of white space on the map because there's gonna be a lot of students that are unassigned. So I think that as a group, you may be able to look at that then and say to us as an administrative team. Okay, given who's not assigned. Not unlike Appendix 5. We would like you to assign those kids and focus on these three factors as you do your distribution. So then, when we're going to look at an unassigned kid somewhere on the map. We can say, better positioned at this school than that school because it meets this criteria that you have set for us as we assign those kids. So if the goal is to better balance your ELL population, so there's not as much of a gap. Now, as we start to look at that assignment factor, we can, we can put that into play.
So the white space has become the building blocks.
Right.
White space has become the building blocks. I think that.
And, and in particular, it's not gonna be, you're not gonna get a one for one on it because transportation is within two miles. But it's going to be more closely aligned to kids who may already be transported.
Right.
And I don't know if, Adam and I will have to get in there and fill around with the software. I'm not sure if we can get some soft spaces underneath so we could see what that two mile radius is from the school. I don't know if, I mean, we might have to have a ginormous map in order to see the differential on there. But it might be a place for us to start too.
So now we, we know though, just looking at this, I mean, obviously there is overlap and there's more students that can go into school. We can see where the hotspots are gonna be just by the one mile data that we already have.
Yep.
And that one mile data is a lot better than current.
So, you know, to give you an example, so now you're looking at it and you're saying, okay, Wood. We do one mile and keep in mind, we did radii because we were working quick and this was the easiest way. Drop the pin, draw a map around it. You're gonna get a little different number when you do driving distance. But if you look at that and say, okay, it's sixty-nine percent. If, which is better than where it's at right now. But if we would like to try to lower it, where are the white spaces that are adjacent to that map that's drawn? And what are the demographic profiles of the kids in there? And is it possible for us to take contiguous students and move them into that attendance area and lower that number?
Yeah.
So.
But you'd also have to take kids out, like there's like eight hundred eighty-eight kids gonna be in the pool.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
That's the harder part, deciding what comes out.
Right, because you're gonna find a lot of these that are, you're gonna have fewer kids than there are seats. Alexander's three hundred and one kids within a mile. Wood is eight hundred and eighty-eight kids in a mile. So what does that look like when we're done? Cause there will be, there'll be fewer schools we have to take out, more schools we have to add. But again, if you've got some criteria, then that helps us decide, how do we start moving those numbers around?
Yeah, I really, I really like that process. I think, and however, you know, and I mean, I'm not, I'm throwing the timeline out, but just saying, if we get a good process and then that shifts the timeline. But to me, to do something like this and then have quite a few times for board to have input. Before we have this map that we say, or the four maps that we say, you know, these are the options. If we've all gone through that process, boy, we're gonna be able to explain those four maps really, really well. And we're gonna know the ins and outs. And then we're gonna have something for people really to respond to and vote, you know, decide or.
I feel like we must say.
Well, I hear, I know, I know what to do.
Remember, late is possible. Is it where they can't implement in 2019? So I, I think if, if we need lots of meetings to have that input, then we have to have money.
So how soon can you come back with something like that?
I'm hesitant to make a promise without talking to Adam first and see where, where he's at on that. Especially cause he's been working really closely with Guide K-12 to try to get some of the challenges. They, they went through a platform upgrade and I didn't go through the training on it. So some of those pieces I know, some I don't. I can draw on the old one, not so well on the new one yet, but I'm getting there.
Okay.
So he's back in the office Thursday.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that I've got a pretty good handle on it from now, from him then. I, I don't think the 10th is overpromising.
Okay.
But I'm, I don't wanna say that cast in concrete till I talk to him.
Okay.
The 10th will be the start, the 17th can put in a placeholder. I think the 3rd might be asking a lot.
We won't be able to get done with it.
No, 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 waiting half a week.
Not, not for this.
But 10th at best would be great, you're right.
Yeah.
As we put placeholders in. I, I would say soonest is best.
Now, let's, let's remember that with every data request we make, there's gonna be a lag time. So if on the 10th, we say, okay, now we need this, Steve may say, I need tell the 26th to get that.
Yeah. But I think if we, once we get that starting point, I'm gonna feel a lot better about all of the work. Because it's gonna feel like, oh, okay, now we're moving puzzle pieces. Now things are starting to get to this place where we have something we can monkey work.
And, and I know this is way more needy, no, but we build layers in the software. So depending on how the iterative changes work. Later changes can sometimes be done in a shorter cycle than earlier changes. Just because we've got some layers built already and it allows us to manipulate the data quicker.
Yeah.
Unless there are radical changes in the layers as you move forward. And I think a couple of you have been with us before where we've like made a left turn in the process. And then that has significantly slowed things down. Cause we had to start building base layers and come up to it. But if you're, if as you build those layers, you're making small changes, it's easier for us to get that data back to you quicker.
Then I'm wondering if as soon as you have whatever you have, can that come out and say, all right. We got six days before the next, uh, first session. Are there any little tweaks you wanna see?
Yep.
That we can then have ready?
And that's the.
So we're not waiting for.
Last time around? That's what we tried to do is we tried to get them out as soon as we had the maps drawn and, and we did the data checks on them. We tried to push them out right away so that they were visible to everybody. Because we'll have community constituents to think of questions that we didn't. Because we found that out last time. And we found out that it was much better to know that before we showed up at the big meetings. Because sometimes there were ways for us to make changes to those maps before we even got to those meetings. So that what would have potentially been a major pitfall in the discussion process was already fixed before we got there. Adam will be excited, he's not even hearing.
So to recap, you're gonna give us a, an attendance zone that will overlap, though the circles will overlap, the one mile.
So we'll give you one mile driving distance plus data.
Numbers, okay. Do you need to know from us now what our three top priorities are from Appendix 5?
I think we can bring that in the next time. Because then we can use that, if we can optimistically on the 10th. If you can tell us what those three are, we would then use those for white space assignment and or overlap assignment. So if you're the Garner Penn area and you've got an area of overlap. If we know what those three are when we come out of the meeting on the 10th. Then it allows us to go into those overlap areas and into the unassigned areas and try to do that assignment. So we can get another round of that maps, those maps back.
So between now and the 10th, let's all take a look at Appendix 5.
Appendix 5 is all the lists to look at.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the PowerPoint.
It's in the presentation.
And that's all I'm good. I think the number one thing is to meet the goal of having the numbers within whatever, I don't remember what the number is. It was in the district average, right? Like, I think that's the whole impetus behind this, much more so than, do we not have islands or do we not have transition? I mean, I, that's number one. Everything else is part of it for sure, but, you know, islands.
That's number seventeen. So would it be helpful to have that information like in a whole format? Like each of HPSN, these are my top three? Or is it better to do that in a secondary format?
That's pretty straightforward, I just asked him, Kristin, I mean, we can push that out to you on the Coltrix platform. We could push all of the, you could literally go through and rank all of them, top to bottom.
I think that would be helpful to have, so we can have that data going in the 10th and review it.
I will tell you, when I, when I sat in the initial meeting for Grant. We went through and did an exercise like that.
Yeah.
And I struggled in that moment to look at it holistically or specific to Grant.
Yep.
Like what were my top.
That was that conversation.
Boundary that I was doing right then and there. So I would not mind doing the exercise again and saying, okay, what are my, my priorities?
Yeah, we can push that out to you.
That wasn't different for me.
I think that would be helpful.
And you, you want us to set up so you rank all of them, right?
Sure.
Or do you just want us to have you rank your top five?
I can either way.
I don't know.
We do either one.
There's a lot of them, I'm gonna be like, these two are about the same.
Yeah.
There's twenty, twenty-one of them.
What do you think, Paul?
Uh, I would, I would be okay with just the top five.
Top five?
I think, I think.
What do you think, though?
I think the first is the top.
I don't know, I'm like with Sean and I remember going through it and some of them seemed close to each other. And if you do them all, then you separate. That's the only thing with me, but I, I'm, I'm not strongly either way.
So I hear us saying top five.
Okay, we'll start with top five.
So, and, and I'd say, as soon as we have that information, can you send it out to us?
Yeah. So Kristin, as the Coltrix stewardship, put that together and we'll push it out to the board. And as soon as we get everybody's responses, we'll collate them and push them back out.
Cause it's helpful to have that as we all think about this, as we talk about this with others. Okay. All right, I think we have a plan for July 10.
And as soon as I converse with Adam and spring this on him. I will immediately follow up with you so that I can confirm one way or the other on the 10th. So we know that.
Even if we don't have the whole thing, can we just have something on the 10th so that we could move forward in the process?
Yeah.
Anything with concrete development is, are, something.
I'm sure we can give you the data on the role of parent schools from a demographic standpoint. We might be able to get some staff information. I might not be able to get the operational pieces, but I'm sure we'll get some of that.
All right. Anything else on this agenda, David, before we move on? Okay. Uh, let's move on to the class size, superintendent directions, 3J6. Just to recap, Amy had indicated in our last meeting that she would find it helpful if we specifically included math and proficiency as a factor. In this policy, so that when she gets questions from the community, she can refer back to the policy. So I don't know how folks feel about it, but I thought it could be as simple as just adding a comma. And adding in proficiency. If we want to. I mean, it says it actually in there, all factors relevant to academic opportunity and student achievement. But I heard her say that she needs more than that.
Well, yeah, and then specifically calls out, there's three numbers to look at. And it doesn't call out other numbers, so I guess specificity would be wanted there.
And then my soapbox, I always say, I'd love some ability added in there too. Thoughts?
I, I don't have any problem adding either of those things, to be honest. But, you know. When we're sitting at the board table and we were just kinda looking at some numbers, right? We're just looking at, these are sort of these aspirational numbers. And if we, we've got some of kind of high end or aspiration, some of low end of the aspiration. And if you just kind of tweak it a little bit. What is it that helps out in other places? Kind of, I, I thought that's kind of what we were going to be looking at in addition to whether or not we have other language in there. I don't know if that is still part of the intent of this discussion. I think by the languages on there, I think it, it's already included in there because it's aspirational. So I think we could say, hey, if you move this over here, maybe you're not quite aspirational here, but you're doing a lot better over here. I think that's fine without changing that language. I just wanna throw that out there. The specific points you made, I think we talked about. So I would get them. I think achievement on there is a tangible thing. I think it's important, yeah. Which is why, why are we doing Grant? It's how you look at it.
And where, exactly where do you wanna add the comma line?
So I, I just, so there's special education learner status, socioeconomic, socioeconomic learner status, comma. And.
I guess it does say.
Proficiency.
Student achievement.
Or student achievement.
Which is in there, it's saying academic opportunities and student achievement. Specific to these groups of kids.
And, and, and I'm saying proficiency are the, are actual numbers, just like ELL is a number, FRL is a number, proficiency is a number. It's a little easier to conceptualize other than just achievement.
Yeah. Yeah, that proficiency.
Yeah.
What do you think, Paul?
I guess I'm still not following exactly where you want to.
Under number five.
It's five, right? But, I mean, the way it reads is.
Are you thinking about under the bullets?
No, not, not, not under number five, I'm sorry. It's under number six.
Oh.
It's the last sentence before the graph.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Cause it's not, it's on the aspirational numbers. For the school population. It's the, what are the factors in determining low, average, high opportunity gaps?
Reading it now, just talked about academic opportunity and student achievement. The following gaps, there's, so we're identifying the ELL students and special education students, SEs students are already having gaps. So I don't know. I am trying to figure out that. And so I think it's something, you might have to reword the whole thing and say, paying particular attention to current proficiency gaps. Amongst whatever supplement you want to put in there, right? Saying that this number is the driving factor.
Or are you looking for it up above where it says, provide pupil teacher ratios that are educationally appropriate, physically sustainable, annual pupil teacher ratio. Review and implementation should consider all factors relevant to academic opportunity. And do you wanna say, and student achievement in.
Proficiency.
Math and literacy, or student proficiency in math and literacy. Is that, is, is that the part that you're looking to change? Is that operational definition?
What I heard from Amy is that when she gets calls from parents and they wanna know why their kid has a class size of thirty-two kids. She can say, because you are, you have an FRL status of twelve percent. So that's why you have thirty-two kids with your kid's cap class. So this would be enabling her to say, because your class had, your kid's class is ninety-five percent proficient in math. This other school over here is thirty-five percent.
Yeah, we're talking about the gaps between schools.
So do you wanna take away what's after the colon then? So as Sean said, are you looking to redraft the whole thing where you're really talking about? You're not looking for those proxies for student achievement, which could be special education, ELL or socioeconomic status. But actually just label it as proficiency in math and ELA.
I don't know, cause if you take those out, I mean, just, I mean, all these numbers, though.
Trying to think this through. So if I've got a class that's proficient one year, third graders. And then I get, based on that number, I get different class sizes the next year. It doesn't necessarily mean the third graders need that. That class of fourth graders might be the one that needs it.
Yeah, exactly. It's not so much a school. It's not so much a school thing, it's, it's a decision and I've got this-
Based on that cohort of students.
Right. So like, an example is, the fifth graders at Lincoln, there's thirty-one fifth graders. So right now, it said that there will be two classes, one with fifteen, one with sixteen.
Okay.
At Lucas, there's, I want to, I don't remember how many sections there are, maybe three sections, fifth graders, twenty-seven students per section.
And the difference in proficiency of that same cohort is, and you don't have to, but it's, it's big.
It's like-
It's not, it's not. Yeah, and that, I mean, that just makes a lot of sense, that if you have a group of kids and you know you have a cohort that's not proficient, they're going to, I mean, they need help, I mean, they need help, whether they're ELL, whether they're third graders or so much, for some reason, that group of fourth graders is just, needs small class sizes to be proficient. I guess, so I guess what I'd like to see before, maybe before we monkey with this language, is, I'd like to see what it looks, like, show me what that looks like with, what's that going to do, so we can see the effect. Because what I don't want to do is, I mean, because some of the, you know, when we talk about ELL and FRL, you know that's coming with some obstacles that, that we know any, we don't necessarily know why that one group of fourth graders, and, and we're then assuming that class size will make a difference, which I think we know that it, it's going to make a pretty immediate impact. I'd like to see, because the other thing about FRL and ELL is that's more predictable. And so it's easier to say, well, we know Kirkwood and Alexander are going to hire FRL. It's going to be harder, and I'm not against this, but it's going to be more, you're going to see, you're going to be shifting teachers a lot more on a year-to-year basis, because now, all of a sudden, your proficiency changes for whatever reason. And maybe you can probably guess that that cohort of kids is going to continue to struggle, you don't want that to happen, but sometimes that's what happens, you're like, and, you get these blips on your data, and it's like, oh, that was the third graders of ninety-eight, and that was just a rough year and a rough class. So I think, I, I just think it's, I'm just trying to wrap my head around logistically, I think what it will mean, and I think this is something about setting precedent, is there's going to be a lot more staff transfers from year to year, you know, because that, that's going to be less predictable, I think, the proficiency from the certain cohort.
Honestly, I, I don't know that I think it will be a lot different, because I think cohorts kind of, I mean, it would be great if it was different, because I'm looking at proficiency is changing, and that's what we want.
Right. I mean, I think it would be one of the most impactful things we can do for a cohort of kids.
I think before we even make this change, I would like to have Amy, Matt, and Lisa, some of that crew here, just to discuss that. I mean, I think, I think like JP said, you can take a look at a class and they may have some behavior challenges or, or mental health challenges that, that's going to affect the way that class is run, and they may need to be split up or have smaller classes, and if you're only, and maybe they are proficient, but maybe they're struggling in something else, you know, not fat and reading.
Well, I guess, and we can certainly bring them in and talk to them, because I think one of the challenges is, if we get too granular with it, with our mobility and stability issues that we have, if we say, in school X, last year's third graders really struggled, so we want to have three sections instead of two, and the fourth graders seem to be doing all right, so we're okay with them having two sections instead of three, and then, I, we have kids move in and out, and now we have a behavior issue or a mental health issue or some other NLL issue that comes into play, if we don't have the flexibility to move staff around. Because right now, what we do is we ask our principals and our teachers to take a look at it, we say, given these numbers, and you've seen this from our principals before, so you're given eighteen staff members, because that's what the numbers say that you should have. We think, and Amy and I do this all the time, the, just the numbers say, you should have three sections of fourth grade and two sections of third grade, or whatever it is. They'll often come back to us and say, we're not going to do that. We're going to run a little bit bigger section here, and so we can run smaller sections here, because these are the student-specific issues that require us to make that decision. And then our answer is always the same, you need to communicate that with your parents so they understand the rationale that's going on behind that, but that, we leave that discretion to the teachers and the administrator in the building. So if we're looking at it literally by cohorts and staffing by cohorts, I'm not sure if in some of our schools, that granularity is going to be too constrictive, if that makes sense.
And, and just to be clear, I, I felt like what I understood from Amy was that she wasn't saying that that would necessarily, okay, I, I was asking her in very specific situations, when you have a very small class, small class size and very high proficiency, and you have a very large class size and low proficiency, in that situation-
Sure.
How do you justify moving that teacher over here?
So like in your-
Not overall for the whole school.
Yeah. So like in your example, the thirty-one, which for us would say, one section of fifteen, one section of sixteen, and you were looking at that and saying, well, high achieving kids with low opportunity gaps, I'm okay with a section of thirty-one so that I can reassign that student, right?
The teacher.
Or the teacher, rather, not a student. That's, that's more what you were looking at.
Exactly. More just individual situations where we see the bright green blocks and it's in a low FRL school.
Um, if it would be all right on the tenth, if I could actually have, get some feedback from her, which we could send out to you before we get to the tenth, to better understand
That's great.
what she's looking at, because I'm not sure how to write that in here.
Yeah, that would be great, if she could, if she could tell us what she needs.
I was-
Which is one of the things that we do at P and G, is we have people who are talking over to them at the table, which is easy to answer, they'll just answer ideas and those questions.
Yeah.
I was going to bring up something similar to what Steve was talking about, because I was sitting in a bar at many negotiations meetings, you know, with the principal in the room, and they were, he and Jay were talking about, I think it was right before board meetings, they had this sheet with the numbers on it, where it makes similar to what we're getting, and he's like, but that's not how we were going to do it, you need to talk to principals, because they're probably not going to align the, the teachers up there.
Yeah.
Because they do it, they work with the more specifics of, yeah, this class might need, if you're going to give me one more FTE, I'm going to put it over here, because they need it.
Right.
If you're looking at thirty kids, four or two kids, and throw your, you know, it could be literally, you know, it could be one or two kids that need something.
It's really hard, in my opinion, to justify ninety-one proficiency, with that class being fifteen students.
Right.
And another school that has fifty-five percent proficient and twenty-seven students in the class.
Right. No, I hear, yeah. Yeah.
If I'm the parent in that class of that student, I, I really have, I wonder why that is.
Right. Yeah.
I guess my point is, I, within the context of what we give them, I think they're at least attempting to adapt to their current population at any time. So if a cohort needs more, I think they will kind of shift within the school. Moving from one school to another school, obviously is a bigger thing, so.
And that's, that takes more direction.
So I think that'd be fabulous, if you could have Amy tell us exactly what she's looking for.
Probably bring Amy and Diane in, I think it's less of a secondary issue, just because of the scheduling piece, yeah. But, oh yeah, Lisa, sorry. I, I think I'll look for Amy and Diane though, and help us out with that.
Okay. Great. So can we have that on the tenth also?
Mm-hmm.
In our work session?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Everybody wants to add to that discussion? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're adjourned.